So, good evening, everyone. Let me, let me, let me help kick us off. I was sharing, good to have Mike Chase here, of course, everyone. And a little bit of a change in transition for a number of years trustee Max Starks has chaired this committee. He's also chaired our investment subcommittee as well as our ways and means committee. So we are transitioning. I see one of our newer appointed trustees, Norm Rodan, Norm, how you doing? Norm works at Bay State Health and has perspective in IT, which is wonderful. And as a former school community member for the city of Springfield. So Norm, it's a little strange because you are actually a committee of one. So even though in this virtual environment, we do call the role, you're calling it for yourself. You'll see, hopefully the agenda up in there. We do Mary Kate Murin as board chair does by virtual proposition attend or has the ability to attend all these meetings, but she is not actually, she's more what we consider ex officio. Unless we needed her to step in as a committee member. So, so Norm, I hate to say it, but tag your it. The agenda is right there. If you want to call the meeting to order, Nanette will call the role and then we really will be able to have Mike and, and our, and our administrators walk us through the rest of it.
Alright, so I'll call the meeting to order. It's a Thursday, I believe it's, let me see what time it is. I don't see the time on my phone clock here, but I'll call the meeting to order. So, do vocal, I believe, in that?
Yes, yes, Mary Kate Murin.
Present.
And Norm Rodan.
Present.
Thank you.
Mike, before we jump into with the agenda, Tony, don't, let me not utilize the opportunity to also give you a chance to just give an introduction. It's again, a little strange norm where we have like a community member, Tony, and again, I want to turn it over to you to share a little bit. Who has the ability to contribute, again, not a trustee formally, but we can sort of build this, this part in. So Tony, let me give you a chance to just provide an introduction, share your background.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, Tony Montagni, I'm a senior vice president at UBS Financial Services in Springfield. Bring with 25 years worth of experience working with high net worth families and also providing institutional consulting to 401K clients.
So Norm, all that is to say, you and we have a expert, not just from our investment advisor, right? fiduciary, which we're going to hear from Mike Chase, but we have folks like Tony who in that, in that capacity also help provide us perspective on investments. And again, Tony, I really appreciate your continued service with the college. It's really been invaluable. We've had great conversations over the years. So again, thanks for the prelude, everybody. Nanette, do you mind bringing the agenda back up just so we've got that ever as a reference, but I'm pretty sure, Mike, we sort of turn things over to you. And well, maybe not. I guess we got to talk about the governance calendar. I don't know Andrea or John Tudor, if we want to start with that first.
I think that's one of our parts too, Dr. Cook.
Great. Michael, let me invite you again. We've got a new trustee here. Just, just share a little bit about the organization you are, you, you're with, right? Of course, and the, the, the long tenure you've now had with the college and particularly your role, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure. So Norm, nice to meet you. I'm happy to kind of connect offline and I'm sure Dr. Cook or John Tudor can get us in touch just to give you a little bit more background. There's any questions as we go through this, as you get up the speed, but so we essentially operate as an independent advisory firm for the college. We're not affiliated with any broker dealer, money manager, et cetera. We essentially act as your outsourced investment office. So we sit on the same side of the table as you. Our goal is to help you build an investment strategy to meet your objectives and then fulfill that strategy by selecting, you know, the underlying money managers, doing all the administrative work behind the scenes, helping you from a governance perspective, policy perspective. And also, you know, meeting on a quarterly basis to share what's going on in the markets, how the performance has been. And really anything that comes to fruition and we work closely with Andrea and John and Dorothy in the finance office to behind the scenes to make this all come together. So that was a quick snippet. You know, we work with close to 50 colleges and universities to oversee their investment pools and about another 250 to oversee their retirement plans. And in total, we advise over 250 billion in institutional assets. We're actually, we have two headquarters, one in Chicago and one just down the street from Springfield and Windsor. And I'm based out of that office. So we've had a nice, long relationship with STCC. I think it's going back close to seven years now. We'll share kind of the longer term performance and history and give you a little bit of context on the investment strategy as it's somewhat unique, as you may be accustomed to or have learned when we dig into it. So there's no questions. I'll jump, I'll share my screen and jump right into the report. Okay. So first off, from a governance perspective, this quarter is a quarter where we sorry, the mouse is being a little touchy here. Okay. The first quarter, the quarter four is where we take a look at strategic allocation, make sure that it remains that we're building a portfolio that remains in lines with the college's objectives. We update our capital market assumptions on an annual basis. We also build that into this analysis. So that's what we'll be talking about here. If I flip through a couple of pages, this is our 20 year outlook. I would say if you look at the, the green bars in the column down the middle. A couple of things to note here, we actually expect return assumptions on a go for basis to move up modestly. As a result of the market conditions from last year. And that might be a little bit counterintuitive, but I'll, I'll give you a brief explanation of why, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. First off on fixed income, current yield of fixed income tends to be a very strong predictor of future return expectations. We actually saw rates move up pretty notably across fixed income markets during the course of 2021. So that did boost fixed income return expectations modestly. I would tell you that they still remain well below long-term historical averages. And as I'll touch on in a minute, you know, are about break even from a real return standpoint. So what I mean by that is the return we expect to get from fixed income as it sits today in this inflationary environment is generally going to be offset by inflation. So we'd expect a flat to negative real return from fixed income on a go forward basis, certainly over the next 10 years and likely creeping into the next 20 years. So a very different environment that we've experienced really for the last 30 years. On the equity side, returns are up as well, although still below long-term averages. The driver that is twofold, actually valuations came down a little bit in 2021 because earnings moved up dramatically, even ahead of price increases. And one of the other inputs into our expectation is that inflation rate. And again, last year it was hovering around 1.7% for that break even inflation rate, which we base this model off of, that has moved up to north of two and a half percent this year. So modest increases across the board, more notably so in foreign markets, valuations there continue to look quite a bit more attractive than US markets. But a modest tick up in return expectations on a go forward basis. You're digging into the portfolio just to level set a little bit. This is specific to the long-term pool. You know, the return objective here is to, you know, build a capital corpus and grow it over time, beating inflation. Being cognizant that there is potential and I guess a likelihood in the future, right? With especially with the building 20 project, if that comes to fruition, to potentially have to spend this down a little bit. But it is designed for a longer term growth. It's not a true endowment, but it's, it's managed like one, and that's what the objective is. You'll see the target allocations here for the policy and where we sit today. So we're a little bit underweight fixed income. As I mentioned, given those concerns over forward looking return expectations and subsequently overweight on the equity side, which proved to be beneficial in 2021 when we dig into the portfolios. And then lastly, just to, to, to level set, this is the modeling software we use. We, we build it internally to take a look at what our return assumptions are. So if you were to take this pool based on our current allocation targets of about 25% fixed income, about 60% equity, a little bit in real assets and about seven and a half percent in alternatives. We would expect that port, the portfolio to generate about a 7% nominal return annualized over the next 20 years. And that's about a, that plots at about a 12.7% volatility, just to put that in actual numbers, you can appreciate in a kind of a very difficult market outcome, a global financial crisis, a tech bubble. We would expect the portfolio to be down about 30% in that type of environment, and that's way at the tail end of a distribution curve. And again, relative to history, if you look at the last 33 years or so, this portfolio actually would have produced about 9% return. So it's a little bit skewed, given how strong markets have been over the last decade, but still, you know, our expectation is for results to be somewhat muted relative to at least recent history on a go forward basis. But most importantly, I think the investment strategy for the long-term pool continues to be right in line with what we're trying to achieve from a return and risk objective for the college. A couple of things we're doing behind the scenes, right? Where we act as your investment office, so we're always, you, you rely on us to make some modest adjustments to take advantage of opportunity sets. Now, a couple of things we're doing, we continue to keep a dynamic, what we call a dynamic position within fixed income. So we don't own a lot of core US fixed income. We own things like unconstrained bonds, global bonds, a little bit of credit to try to increase that yield and be a little bit more flexible and rising rates, which we think is important. You've actually repositioned the portfolio a little bit to shift a little bit from international markets to US markets. We still like foreign markets relative to US markets, but the opportunities that shifted more in favor of US markets over the course of last year. So we're just kind of resetting the center line from a risk management perspective and continue to be proponents of real assets in this inflationary environment we find ourselves in and marketable alternatives or hedge funds, which we think we can get a much better return from those types of asset classes that we can get from fixed income on a go forward basis. And we'll see all those implemented in the portfolio. So I think from a, from an overall governance perspective, everything continues to be right in line with strategy and we're, when we're not seeing any or making any recommended changes for any broader strategic initiatives at this time, but I'll pause there and just see if there's any questions from the group. Okay. Flipping into the markets, so 2021 continued to be a pretty good year, although results were mixed. You know, fixed income, as I mentioned, starting at very low base rates, pretty muted returns as we expected. If you added a spread component, you did a little bit better, although spreads tightened in very dramatically for the year. So that leaves us at still very low base rates and very tight spreads, not a lot of opportunity in the fixed income markets on a go for basis. On the equity side, you can see very robust returns here in the US, notably from US large cap companies. Value dominated in the first half of the year, growth resurged in the second half of the year and generated these results. Developed foreign markets, double digit returns, but you know, certainly not where we saw the US markets and the emerging markets where the big headwind. That was mainly the result of China, which was down close to 20% for the year, given some geopolitical concerns, obviously. Regulatory concerns from the government impacting kind of industry and markets in general drove Chinese markets down pretty dramatically. Then real assets over here on the right-hand side tend to respond very well in inflationary periods. You can see that was the case in 2021, reads up about 43%, commodities up 27. And so we own all these exposures across the portfolio. I mentioned on the, on the fixed income side, here's where we are for spreads and yields 1.5%. That's crept out to about 1.8%. I don't know where it closed the day today, but hovering near 1.85. So rates have moved up again this quarter to date period and spreads remain very tight. So continuing to be concerned about fixed income price impact of rising interest rates opportunity set going forward. It still plays a role in the portfolio as an anchor to winward in difficult equity markets, but certainly want to have a muted expectation from fixed income and have reduced the allocation as a result of that. On the equity side, here's those valuations I mentioned, US continues to look quite elevated relative to long-term averages. Developed foreign markets and emerging markets are actually within kind of the one standard deviation range in emerging markets, given their difficult year last year, essentially right on median. So much more attractive from a pricing standpoint. You know, go forward. What are the themes for this year? Number one is inflation. We think it's going to be here to stick around for a little while. We do think aspects of it like energy prices, some of the supply chain disruptions are probably more transitory and will be worked out at some point. But some of the wage pressure that we've seen, housing pressures that we've seen, we think will be more structural and will likely keep inflation elevated. So paying close attention to that. Also paying close attention to central bank policy. We know the Fed is starting to talk about a more hawkish stance, raising interest rates. We think central bank policy across the globe will start to diverge. They really had been running in sidestep with one another, and now they're going to start to focus on their, their constituents and their local markets based on their policy decisions. And that is something to pay attention to. So, and then also kind of throw on top of that, right? Pandemic, Omicron, whatever comes next, certainly short-term pricing impacts of that. So we think volatility is here to stay in a meaningful way in 2022 and certainly experience that on a year-to-date basis as we felt. Any questions on the markets before we flip it over to the portfolios?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Norm. All right. So here's where we ended the year, about 29.7 million dollars across the two pools. You'll see if we were in that dollar cost average strategy, right? We're moving about a million dollars from the short-term pool to the long-term pool on a monthly basis. 3 million moved in the quarter. We moved another million in January. We did pause in February based on the committee's directive to have this meeting first and just kind of re-level set on where we want to see that trend going forward. The initial goal was to bring the short-term pool gradually down to about a four to five million dollar allocation, which is kind of that buffer that we've been holding for, for some times. We can discuss that here in a minute, but this is where we sit today. From a long-term portfolio perspective, again, about just shy of 20 million, generally right in line with those target allocations. And from a return standpoint, results continue to be quite strong, both on a relative and absolute basis. Up 4.2% for the quarter, up 12.7 versus 11.7 on a, on a trailing one-year basis. So continue to, you know, happy with the results from the portfolio. A little bit of dispersion across the managers generally for the quarter, fixed income was essentially flat. We saw the US equity managers kind of hold serve relative to the Russell 3000 index. Diamond Hill, which is a little bit of a value tilt, was, that was a bit of a headwind for the quarter. But that was more than offset by a recent change we made in the portfolio to add Conestoga on the small cap side. Small cap growth was a very difficult place to be. A number of companies in that index sold off dramatically. So Conestoga has a higher quality bias, which we hired them specifically for that approach. And they were rewarded for that. And what was a very kind of choppy environment for, for small craft growth companies. The international portfolio was right in line. We saw some outperformance from MFS on the growth side. Dodge and Cox also performed well relative to its value peers, but value, you know, relative to growth was a little bit behind. And then Schroders in the emerging market side had a bit of a tough quarter. Given some of their exposures in China, but they've been a very nice holding in the portfolio and no major concerns on a go for basis from them. The other thing we did was we recently made that switch from Atoos on the hedge fund side to Ironwood. That happened as of November, they've been off to a very nice start since we added them actually about up, up 40 basis points where that their, their peers are actually negative during that time. So really no concerns over the portfolio, you know, I'll continue to keep a close eye on it, but kind of everything plugging along as we would expect. And we would expect some of these exposures in this alternative asset allocation, the active managers on the equity side in a slightly more dynamic approach and a rising rate environment, all to have helped notably in the month of January. So we'll see how the returns come in, but that would be the expectation is that we should, I would expect with us to be a little bit ahead of market in the month of January as a result of those tilts. Any questions on the long-term pool?
Mike, any additional comments on the, oh, any additional comments on the underperformance of Boston Partners? Versus the peers?
Yep. So Boston Partners is, you know, on a three-year basis, they're right in line with the benchmark, Tony. It hasn't been phenomenal. They do a little bit in the micro cap space. They tend to be more relative value. We would have thought they would have had a little bit of a better 2021. So we're paying close attention to that. But they had a very strong January in a choppy market environment. So we're, the team is digging into them a little bit. It's not enough underperformance that we've lost conviction in them, but are paying attention. But we would expect them in a more difficult environment where, where security selection comes back into play to start to kind of reassert themselves relative to peers. And if we don't see that, we'll, we'll look to make a change.
Okay, were you going to jump in? I thought I said go for the mute button, sorry.
Yeah, I would just, you know, from a interest rate perspective, I know you're just kind of keeping an eye on it, Mike, but any insights you can provide. I know that the Fed is kind of up in the air, given it's things that are still going on with Omicron and COVID, but be interested to know, you know, any, any foretelling out there?
Yeah. So I would, our expectation is the Fed is going to raise rates three or four times in 2022. That's, you know, again, they can only impact the, the short end of the curve, right? So we'll have to see how the long end and there's, you know, demand there. There's a lot of pensions that are taking this opportunity to kind of de-risk some portfolios as a result of rising rates and lock in some of that improved funded status. So that always has an impact from a technical standpoint. Last I heard the monthly call with Rick Reader, who leads at BlackRock Strategic Income Team and is their CIO of fixed income. You know, they kind of thought rates were going to settle out around the 175 to 185 range on the 10-year treasury. I wouldn't be surprised if it creeps up a little bit more than that. I think things, I can't see it getting much more than two, right? Until we're, you know, three or four rate hikes in, but we're certainly in a quirky market environment, right? Where, where folks are eager to make changes and try to predict things. So we'll continue to keep a close eye on that and, and we'll certainly discuss it at these meetings.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I mean, Mike, it's just a, a point of context at this, there's, there's a ton of detail, Norm. And, and again, this is relatively new for the college. As Mike Chase noted, about seven years ago, we went this way where we sort of managing what we call reserves in this quasi-endowment way. Again, went to the trouble of hiring a, a, a manager of this and, and this is the amount of detail that goes into the portfolio. And again, it's really been helpful. They're very mindful, even at this very granular level. Really, really monitoring performance. And again, you're going to see there is, there is a, a set of assets both in a long-term pool and a short-term pool that really helps us with some liquidity and the ability sort of reach in if we needed to. Things have been tighter, certainly in the past. We'll see if they clearly tighten up in the future with where enrollment is. Again, Mike, just wanted to give a little bit of context on all of that, because yes, there is a ton of information coming into a, a first time with all this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm learning, but yeah, I could see some of the relationship that we do with other companies that I, I deal with, but it's more grangler here. I'm seeing more different things. So thank you for taking your time and, and being calm and explaining in a proper way for me. So thanks.
Sure. And like I said, Norm, if, if after this and offline, I'm happy to connect and just go a little bit more detail, explain anything, give you a little context on the history, you know, whatever's helpful as you get up to speed.
Most definitely. We're definitely going to connect.
Okay. Flipping over to the short-term pool, again, about just shy $10 million in that pool to end the year. Right in line with allocations, you know, we've been raising a million dollars a month. So we've, you know, generally used it as an exercise to rebalance plus there hasn't been a ton of activity in, in the, the short-term fixed income area for the last couple of months. From return perspective, it was slightly negative for the quarter, but still I can, on a three-year basis, up about 2%. Right in line with that, with the benchmark. So this pool continuing to do what it does, focus exclusively on trying to earn some yield above money market, but providing, you know, a lot of downside protection, liquidity. You know, if the college needs it and, you know, generally kind of participating the way we do expect it to as a result. So not, not a ton to share in this, except it's meeting expectations and all the managers are generally meeting expectations, but I'll see if there's any questions.
Mike, in, in here in the short term, do you have what the actual yield is off of the, maybe the average yield off of the short-term portfolio?
I don't have it off the top of my head, Tony, but I could calculate it and share it with the group. If I had to guess, it's probably going to be about 45 basis points.
Okay.
We're getting about, and maybe it's crept up a little bit of late, but the T of fund, we're getting about probably one and a half from getting maybe a little bit higher now with the recent market moves and with the two short-term pools in the kind of 50 basis point range. It probably dropped down a little bit. Now it's moved up as the short end of the curve has popped up. So maybe it's a little bit higher than that on the SC 30 day SEC yield, but I would, it's certainly less than one.
Thank you.
So that was it for the report. I think the only thing to bring up and, and John Tudor, I don't know if, if you want to kind of lead this conversation, but we did pause this dollar cost average program where we'd been moving about a million dollars or exactly a million dollars a month from the short-term pool to the long-term pool, based on that $10 million contribution that was made. The goal was to continue that really until we, we brought the short-term pool back down to about a $5 million target. The committee had asked us for, to pause in February before moving forward, just to kind of revalidate the financial conditions of the college, any changes to the building 20 plan, et cetera. And in talking with John briefly ahead of this meeting, it sounds like everything is still kind of status quo on that and still waiting to hear a formal approval. So in talking with him, my initial thought would be to, to keep us on that path. But I will, we'll pause with the group and just get any input or any questions.
I mean, my prompt is, is have, have the conditions changed any or significantly enough that would change us from that approach? Obviously, if, if not, despite what we've seen out there, then, then it obviously makes sense for, and again, this is norm where as opposed to a vote or a sort of formality that we just affirmation, particularly again trustee led to continue with, with an approach that has sort of been managed administratively.
All right. So is there a vote that we need to vote for at, at this point, or is this disinformational at this point?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm, 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 let me make things harder. Sorry. Really, Mike, the question is, has anything changed where we should alter the approach again, if that is the recommendation, Norm, then, then you're going to find we just really, it's just affirming, staying the course that we've, we've charted.
Okay, yeah. I would say if, if nothing's changed financially at the college or structurally at the college or kind of what the longer term plans are, then there's nothing that's changed that would defer me from moving this. If anything, kind of moving the next slug is actually the reason we did this, right, is trying to take advantage of market dislocations and not put all our eggs in one basket as we kind of shift that to try to make sure we're beating inflation and, and invest it for the future.
And I think it's worth, and normal, just check with our, our finding it seems so Andrea, Nathan's in our CFO, John Tudor, our controller. Andrea, John, anything from our side budget-wise that would have us want to pause or otherwise delay? And there you have it, Norm. There you have it from both sides. Both again, from the administrative finance function from the college and from our advisor externally. So again, I, I think with that team outlook, then we're, we're in real solid shape with the plan we have in place.
Okay. So just, I guess, continue, of course, would be my recommendation then, as we go forward then.
Okay, Norm, that was everything that I had for my portion. Unless there's any questions from the group.
So I guess we could adjourn our meeting if that's all we have. Unless there's somebody that's, has any other questions about on what we reviewed. I'm, I'm okay with everything we just saw and if our financial team agree that everything looks okay on our side, then I would say we probably adjourn the meeting at this point, I believe.
Let's just check Nanette, anything left on the agenda that we didn't get to? Okay. Again, just, just to note, of course, for people out there, the date of the next meeting I see is in May and you'll see, Norm, that's how we do it on, on the sort of quarter more or less. So obviously we'll see where those Fed interest rates go, Mike, right? We'll see what's the impact of inflation and its continuation that way. And we'll certainly have our enrollment quite And we'll certainly have our enrollment quite clear for the spring semester and, and likely, hopefully, Mike Chase, I share with you a pretty solid draft of a budget that may be going in front of trustees that month for final approval. We'll see if we, we get all the way there by then.
Okay, great.
All right, guys. Thank you for the, um, meeting today and let's adjourn. There's no, is there a vote to adjourn the meeting?
No, that's again, this, Matthew's always smile Riley at this point, Norm, where he would say, okay, can I get roll called to adjourn? And then he would say, aye. So you could just say, yes, there you go. Go ahead.
Aye. We're all set.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your guys.
Take care, everybody.
Reach out to me, please, to talk about, more about this later on, right? Dr. Cook.
Will do. Thank you.